All right. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may I have a roll call? As you're on mute.
Councilmembers Davis.
Present.
McKenna. McCray. McCray?
I saw him.
I see him, Councilman McCray, can yours? Can't hear you.
He is on mute.
Doesn't look like he's on mute, but he is present.
We do visibly see him.
Yes, Councilman Mills-Ransome.
Present.
Councilman Welch.
Present.
As President Good.
Present.
Present.
Uh, Council President, we have all members present in a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for February 16th?
Both.
Second.
Any questions? All right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the minutes, uh, have been approved. Just a quick note about, uh, the C back for 2021. Uh, we'll be moving forward with the C back, uh, with the C back for the budget process, uh, this year. Uh, so I'm asking all council members to submit their nominees to the C back no later than Friday, April 2nd, uh, 2021, so that we can, uh, have those names in time for approval for the, uh, April council meeting. What I'm told is that the administration, uh, looks to have the budget introduced introduction ready for submission, uh, to the council by the, by that meeting, uh, on April 12th. All right, uh, we'll look to have our departmental, uh, hearings throughout the month of May with possible adoption of the budget at the June council meeting. So that's a, a rough timeline of what we expect. Uh, hopefully we can, we can stick to that. All right. We'll first move to, uh, we'll next move to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 2021 dash oh five by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021 oh five is an ordinance amending chapter two, article nine, by amending the duties of division of inspections and amending chapter two, article 10, to create the division of building and construction. It's hereby certified, the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on February 24th, 2021.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. As customary, if you wish to speak, hit that hand icon, uh, and you will be unmuted. Stitch your name and address for the record to be heard on this.
Also, if you dialed in by phone, it will be star nine for your hand raised function.
Thank you. Let's see, we have at least one hand raised. Nancy, please unmute yourself, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Nancy Pivare, but I want to speak on the next one, so.
Okay.
I don't want to speak on this one.
No problem, well.
Thank you.
Then. Any other members of the public?
No.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this order, ordinance?
Both.
Second.
Okay, may I have a motion to, uh, let's see, clerk, can I have a roll call?
You do need a motion to adopt.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading?
Both. Both.
Second.
Okay clerk, now roll call.
That was moved by Vice President Good, seconded by Councilwoman Welch, Councilmembers Davis.
Did we vote to close?
I was the one that seconded it, by the way.
Did we vote to close public?
We just got a first and a second, we didn't.
We didn't vote to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? All right, public hearing is now closed. We still have a motion and a second.
So that's correct, the second was made by council. Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Ransome?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
And also President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading.
Okay, thank you clerk, please read MC 2021 dash oh six by title and further certify that its ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021 oh six is an amendment, chapter 16, vehicles and traffic, article seven through streets, stop intersections, stop and yield intersections, designating certain four-way stop intersections to remove the four-way stop sign at the intersection of Rock Avenue and Myrtle Avenue. It's hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on February 24th, 2021.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. A moment, because I know you at least have one member of the community indicating they wanted to speak. Pivare, if you could unmute yourself, name and address for the record.
Okay, Nancy Pivare, 1129 Myrtle Avenue, uh, Plainfield. I'm, I'm glad that this ordinance is up. I'm not sure what the solution is for the intersection of Rock and Myrtle Avenue, because that intersection has a lot of inherent issues. As a resident of this area for my whole lifetime, um, ever since you put that four-way stop down there, I have completely avoided that intersection, because I used to travel it to work every day, but it got to the point where I was late to work every day, so I completely stopped using it. It's always been a problem due to the uses that are located near there. There's now a school in the area, there's the ball fields, there's three utility companies, including the PMUA, the Health Center, the Humane Society, it borders the residential area neighborhoods. It also borders four other municipalities, Biscataway, North Plainfield, Greenbrook and Denellen. It also borders two counties, Middlesex and Somerset County. And Rock Avenue is a county road past the Brook in North Plainfield. The traffic backs up there all the time. It also backs down toward, um, Biscataway, uh, heading to South Second Street. Um, I'm not sure what the answers are for that corner, but there definitely needs to be a traffic study undertaken at some point that includes all the other north-south roads of Clinton Avenue and West End, because since the fourth way, four-way stop was put on Rock Avenue, West End Avenue has been an issue like never before. Traffic backs up past the Greenbrook, uh, Bridge and trying to exit Greenbrook Park, which I do, uh, constantly every day, more sometimes three, four times a day, in either direction. In order to get out onto West End Avenue from Greenbrook Park, you're at the mercy of the drivers, of the other drivers heading north and south, and you have to pray that they're going to be courteous and let you through. Some of the drivers are very kind, others are not. Um, the traffic is just horrendous in, in this area, especially at, um, four and five o'clock, and then when you have the ball fields, um, the soccer fields going on at, at Greenbrook Park, it's really a mess during the summer, so. I'm not sure, just taking away the four-way stop is going to eliminate some of the issues, but at some point, the city really needs to study that intersection and come up with a better idea, and also study the other north-south directions to help some of the residents in the area, uh, circumvent traffic, because people are now exiting off West End Avenue to get through, um, back, uh, north-south. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any other members of the public with their hands raised?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Wait, someone else did just raise their hand?
Okay, we'll allow them to speak.
Hi, um, I wanted to know how long does, um.
I'm sorry, uh, don't, uh, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, New York a Cruz, 119 Berkman Street.
Thank you. Go right ahead and speak regarding this ordinance.
Um, just, uh, want to know how long does a law take effect after, uh, you guys, um, put it through?
Twenty days, Council President.
Okay.
Thirty days?
Uh, twenty days, thank.
Twenty days, okay.
Twenty.
Thank you.
Twenty, yes.
Two zero. Okay, uh, we have anyone else who wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Nancy's hand is back up again, but I don't believe she wants necessarily to speak for this.
That's probably a mistake, so we can just move to the next person.
So there's no one else?
Okay, I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, public hearing on this ordinance is closed, may have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, this ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, clerk, can I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2021 zero six, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray? Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
And also President Hockaday?
Yes.
Unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading.
Clerk, please read MC 2021 dash oh seven by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021 oh seven is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement, Centurion Plainfield, uh, 1222 South Avenue, South Ave Urban Renewal LLC, and granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map as block 625, line two, and identified in the city's tax record as 1216 through 42 South Avenue. It's hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on February 24th, 2020.
Floor is now open for any member of the public who would wish to speak on this ordinance. Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed, have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2021 oh seven, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray? Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, want to oppose, the ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, clerk, please read MC 2021 dash oh eight by title and further certify that it has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021 oh eight is an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation and to establish a cat bank. It's hereby certified, the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on February 24th, 2021.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. I do not see anyone raising their hand. Um, hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
I think I heard something from Councilman Good.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, clerk, may I have a?
Councilmembers Davis?
Wait, did we do a motion? We did a motion to close.
Yeah.
To adopt?
Adopt the ordinance.
What if we just close the, close public here?
Yeah.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted?
Both.
Second.
Okay, clerk, roll call now, please.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is six in favor, want to oppose, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. We'll now move to public comments limited to resolutions, motions and ordinances to be introduced on first meeting. A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments, limited to those resolutions, ordinances being considered. Uh, if you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon, you'll be recognized and unmuted, give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes, the floor is now open.
Hello, this is Timothy Priano, 1405 Martin Avenue. Again, we must address the elephant in the room. Our 134 dash 21, the pedestrian mall in MC 2021 dash 13, another apartment building earmarked for downtown. What is the end game here? We have new buildings going up in the city, but we have not addressed the blighted ones. The corner of Seventh and Park is one example. Code enforcement and violations, what is the quality of life task force doing to address these buildings and others? We've heard for years that this will be resolved, and it's being worked on, enough talk, action is long overdue. This is not helping the image of the city. We have tons of ordinances on the books, but no one seems to care to enforce them. The streets of our downtown are horrific. I went to get a haircut this past weekend, and out of parking spot in sight, tried to stop and get a cup of coffee and a treat, still no parking to be found. Do we just keep moving forward, overcrowding our streets and taking away little parking there is? When are we going to improve the, for the people of Plainfield and not for the developers? Still confuse why anyone would want to rent in Plainfield when you still have to leave town to buy basic items. Wild was in CVSs are not destination shopping. We need to address the downtown that we have, upgrade the stores and services so they are clean and inviting. We need to stop putting the cart in front of the horse. This is about those who live here and pay taxes. We are the ones who want to see an improvement, so that we can spend our dollars in town instead of everywhere else. We all must work together before more of our neighbors put up their homes for greener pet, greener and cleaner pastures. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Michelson, uh, name and address for the record.
William Michelson, 556 Belvedere Avenue. Ordinance 2120 oh nine, I'm sorry, 2021 oh nine, to rename Central Avenue. I, I don't believe anything should ever be renamed for anyone or for anything. The disruption that it causes to people's lives is just ridiculous. If you change the word rename in that resolution, perhaps to designate where a handful of signs for this, these names are put up in particular spots, but the name Central Avenue does not come down. The post office is not told that anything has changed, and the residents on that street, and it must be like a hundred properties at least, um, it doesn't have to affect them at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Michelson. Ms. Mary Burwick, uh, please stitch your name and address for the record, may be heard.
Hi, Mary Burwick, 1785 Sleepy Hollow Lane. I would like to agree with what Timothy said, and, um, just, just add to that, that it's really disappointing that, you know, the development philosophy here appears to be building anything a developer wants to build. You know, quoting an old article from the New York Times, asking a developer what you need for your neighborhood is like asking a tapeworm to order your dinner at a restaurant. Um, the parking situation here is miserable, and it's absolutely miserable. We don't need a trophy project like a pedestrian plaza, and that the number of apartments is just getting to the point of the ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I just see initial F, but you may, uh, be heard.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Francie Moore, 975 Fromwood Avenue in Plainfield. I also echo Mr. Priano's, um, comment, and, um, not understanding what is the logic behind building so many apartment complexes, especially when a lot of them are so expensive and they're not even accessible to a lot of the Plainfield residents that are already here. Our downtown area, it could be better, it's just terrible right now, you know, it's not appealing, it doesn't really want you to go out there and buy stuff or get anything, there's no parking half the time, so nine times out of ten, unfortunately, I don't even go that way, I go to like the neighboring towns, because the situation just keeps getting worse and worse, and the traffic gets getting worse. I mean, a lot of people are working from home right now, so once you create all these buildings, traffic is going to be even three times worse than what it is. I moved to Plainfield five years ago from Union, because again, over there, they're doing, they did the same thing, and it was overpopulated. So here I am in Plainfield, having to revisit the nightmare that I left, because, um, yeah, more buildings. So, having said that, I'm just hoping that you guys take into consideration our comments and our concerns, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. They have a motion to close public comment on resolutions, ordinances being considered this evening?
Move, Council President.
Second.
Have a second?
Councilwoman Davis, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public comments, limited to resolutions, motions and ordinances considered this evening is now closed. Okay, we'll now move to resolutions. Are there any comments on council resolutions, R 11221 through R 1821?
I have a comment.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
I just want to say how proud I am that in Women's History Month, we have so many resolutions that either honor women or that honor, uh, things that affect women, they honor, uh, organizations that support the growth of young women, um, they honor a First Ward woman who is celebrating ninety years, so I'm just glad to see, um, resolutions from the council that are not only robust, but they are really apropos for March being Women's History Month.
You're here. You're here. Any other, any other questions or comments from council members?
I, I just got one quick comment. Um, it's regarding, uh, R 11421, which is, uh, a resolution by Councilman McCray to honor the, the life and legacy of Ken Robertson, and for a lot of people, they may not know Ken, because Ken, um, and Charles, you can correct me, but Ken has been off of the planning board for probably five years, six years, something like that. Um, but he had been on there for somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and fifty years. I mean, the guy was like, had been on there for thirty-five, forty years or something. Um, tremendous impact on the city of Plainfield, not everything that he worked hard to do and promote, um, came to fruition, as, as, you know, they don't all come to fruition, but, uh, he was a, a incredibly smart man, incredibly creative. Uh, he was, he was, uh, could be a little stubborn and pigheaded, but I can relate to that. Um, and I had the honor of serving with him on the planning board and, and was his, his neighbor, sat right next to him, and as he got older and his Parkinson's did not affect his mind, but affected his body and his voice, um, I, I developed a, uh, an ability to, to understand him and be able to, um, you know, uh, increase the volume and make sure everybody could hear his important statement. So I think it's a, it's a tremendous, uh, honor, um, for him, and I think it's a tremendous honor for Plainfield that we had his service for so many years, so.
Thank you for that context, Councilman. Okay, may I have a motion to approve, R 112 through R 118 dash 21?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, R 11221 and through R 118 dash 21 are now approved. Uh, clerk, would you, uh, please proceed with reading of the remaining resolutions?
Resolution 11921, authorizing the execution of professional services agreement, city of Plainfield and Claims Resolution Corporation.
Looking for questions from council? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion?
Both.
A second?
Second.
Okay, that was Councilman McCray, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? R 119 dash 21 is approved.
Resolution R 12021, authorizing a contract award to Millennium Strategies.
Any questions from council members?
Just a, just a quick comment, and, and last year, um, I think it was last year, because, yeah, last year, um, I had asked that, that we get a report for their, their monthly work and the, the, um, grants that they apply for and, and review to consider applying to, and then what their results are, and, uh, and I think it was nice for me to get that report every month and see that, that they did, um, do a nice job, and there was a, a pretty significant return on investment for their services, so.
This is true, certainly, uh, got a good bank for our buck out of Millennium, and I'm happy that we can continue with their services. Um, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, R 120 dash 21 is approved.
Resolution 12121, authorizing transfer of appropriations in the calendar year 2020 budget to accumulated absences trust.
Scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
A second, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 12221, authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the calendar year 2020 budget.
Questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? 122 dash 21 is approved.
Resolution 12321, certified, certifying final COVID-19 special emergency in the amount of eight hundred thirty-three thousand dollars.
Scanning the screen for questions from council members.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Or more of a comment, I should say. Um, so I just want to make sure for the benefit of the public, we just kind of revisit how we got here, and when we talk about raising money, what that means, um, because whenever we say that we're raising money into the budget, it kind of sets off alarm. Because whenever we say that we're raising money into the budget, it kind of sets off alarms for residents. So just to make sure like we're all on the same page. So for everybody who's watching the meeting, they kind of know what's going on and nobody's like starts a crazy rumor that we're just raising taxes to be raising taxes.
All right. Back in November, there was resolution R 32820, you know, which basically identified the fact that we anticipated that our revenues were going to be down by $900,000. Now, you at the, as a result of the year end, that number is now $833,000. And we have a requirement to report that back to the state. And you take another step back, the state gave us the opportunity of being able to spread that lost revenue out over five years. And so that is what we are looking to do. We are hoping ultimately that it doesn't have a negative impact on the taxpayers, which is one of the reasons we did it. So it could be spread out over time. So we get five years to do it, not counting 2021, you know, which is a positive thing for us. And at this point in time, we are not expecting to go to the market to finance it. We are hopefully going to finance it internally. You know, so we don't expect to incur any new debt where we go to the street to get money, but we will look to do it internally.
Director West, I just want to add, Councilwoman, because you mentioned that, you know, you want this recording for residents who listen and you mentioned that we're not just raising taxes to raise taxes. This, this resolution is the, we have, at, at this point, we have no reason to believe it would raise taxes and there is no discussion in this council meeting about anything raising taxes. So for anybody watching, I want that to be clear.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Council President, I have a question.
Sure.
Director, Director West, do we have any indication yet if, if there's a possibility at all that we will have any assistance for this amount or other expenditures, other than FEMA reimbursements, et cetera, from the federal government, from the legislation that was signed?
Yes, we are hoping that the city will receive funds. You know, it was in, in the bill and we're waiting to see what that turns out to be, but we are anticipating being included in the American Relief Act.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay. R 123-21 is approved.
Resolution 12421 authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the calendar year 2020 budget, the amount of $15,000.
Okay, scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved, Council President.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, indicate by.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? R 124-121 is now approved.
Resolution 12521 authorizing the adoption of the current fund and parking utility temporary budget appropriations.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, I think it was about 150,000 for the parking authority. Is that the entire budget? Or is that just a portion of the anticipated budget, like how we only give 50% now and then the rest is when we like do the budget, when we pass the budget?
Yes, that is only a portion of the 2021 budget.
Do we know what the percentage is that that is? Is like half? Is it a quarter of it?
It's about half of the projected budget for 2021.
Thank you.
Director West, what percent, how much of that budget is really a transfer from existing budget into a new budget line?
Are we talking about the parking utility?
Yeah.
Basically, the majority of it, I'd say 75% of it. I mean, there are a couple of line items that are new and different, but it's pretty much a transfer of, of the Parking Bureau budget, you know, to, to the utility.
Okay. And then how many, what, what additional headcount for salaries is in there?
It is the same, the, the only new headcount is the head of the group. And even that's not new because that was a move from a, a different position. So you know, there, there is a, a manager of the parking utility. So that's the additional budget line there. But again, the majority of that money, you know, was already in the city budget.
So there's a, there's a increase in pay for the title bump, but are we replacing that prior title?
Yes, there is, there's activity this evening, I believe, on those titles.
So, so there's a, there's a, there is a headcount change?
There is a, there is a responsibility change, that's all.
No, he's.
Headcount change.
He's asking, Director West, he's asking if you're replacing the position behind the person who's being moved.
No.
Which is the answer is no.
Changing responsibilities, duties and responsibilities are changing. There is no net headcount change.
The person is absorbing both roles.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, further members from cap, further questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay. This resolution is approved.
Resolution 12621 authorizing a refund due to a state tax appeal.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so Director West, we know with tax appeals, that's a loss in revenue for the city. What are some ways that the city makes up that loss in revenue?
It's a good question. It gets spread across all the taxpayers because the city budget doesn't change. You know, so it gets, it gets spread throughout the taxpaying public.
You're, you're talking about, I'm sorry to jump in again, you're, you're talking about the 833,000, Councilwoman?
No.
The, the reduction in revenue?
No.
Of the parking?
No, I'm talking about when we have tax appeals, that's the reduction in revenue. So what are ways that the city makes up for that loss in revenue?
Okay, overall?
Yes.
Well, again, there are a number of things that go on. That's one of the reasons we have a department like Economic Development that's looking to, you know, go ahead and bring in, you know, commercial as well as other entities so that we increase the commercial and apartment bases here in the city. Because before all of the activity, remember the taxpaying public was 80% homeowners. And one of the things that's a goal of the city is to increase the commercial you know, aspect of our tax base. And so we continue to look, you know, at opportunities that will help bring about a shift in that. The other thing that happens is that you hope that it'll bring in other businesses that, to come to town, which will then drive others to have an interest in coming in. But it, it's really you know, hoping that tomorrow brings a, a better economic opportunity or outlook for the city of Plainfield. But again, until that happens, it gets spread across the existing taxpayer base.
Thank you.
Further questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? R 126-121 is approved.
Resolution 12721 canceling the 2020 tax bill due to a 100% disabled veteran exemption.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? 127-121 is approved.
Resolution 12821 authorizing approval to apply and accept the New Jersey Department of Highway Traffic Safety distracted driving statewide crackdown.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Director Burgess, have we seen an increase in distracted driving in our city?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
I don't have specific statistics on that to say that. I would have to, you know, do a, a search on that, on the statistics of some of this is issued based on that. But we have been doing this every year in order to keep those numbers down in the city and applying for these particular grants for that purpose. But if that's some information you would like me to get, I can do that.
If you don't mind, please, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council members? I entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 129 authorizing a city of Plainfield, contracting for replacement, the Plainfield Fire Department.
Scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved, Council President.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
13021 authorizing approval to submit a grant application with the County of Union Third Street Roadway Improvement Project.
Do we have questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 13121 authorizing approval for a street opening at 201, Road 3, Johnson Avenue.
Scanning the screen for questions from my council colleagues. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
And Resolution 13221 authorizing the approval of a fireworks agreement between the City of Plainfield and Garden State Fireworks.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, Director Daddney, because we didn't have the fireworks last year, I don't remember if it was on the agenda or not. I think it was because you do this early. Do we have like a credit with them? Or anything for this year?
No, there's no credit because we didn't approve it last year. We did this, 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 no, going out again for the bid to award to Garden State. Nothing happened last year.
I remember we didn't have it, but I just couldn't remember if we had.
No, there was no, we, we just held back from that. No, there was nothing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 13321 authorizing an appropriation to McManamin Scotland and Balmine for professional services as redevelopment council.
Scanning the screen for questions from my council colleagues. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions for the record? What, what was, was that an opposition or abstention?
Opposition.
Okay. Please note that, Mr. Clerk. This resolution is approved, 61.
Noted with six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you.
Resolution 13421, amending Resolution 14619, authorizing the award of professional services agreement to Panone and Associates.
Questions from council colleagues?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Can we just have some clarity on what exactly Panone is doing for us for the pedestrian mall? I think I'm a little confused about what exactly is happening because I thought it was my understanding that we had a RFP go out and it was in conjunction with Lot 6. So I just, I think I just need clarity on where we're at, at this point, when it comes to the pedestrian mall. You're on mute, Director Jackson.
Panone did the design of the pedestrian mall, so it had to be engineered in terms of design. And so where we're at is in August, September, we went out to RFP for parking lot 6. And so we've interviewed, we've gone back and forth with the respondents. We will be bringing forth to you at the next meeting the, the group that we'd like to proceed with to designate as the developers, they will be paying for the construction of the pedestrian mall. And so that's actually to build it out and all of those things. So Panone, in this case, the original contract for the design was 107,750. And $50, we're asking that it be increased by $15,000. The money is there in the UEZ line item. It's just that the contract was originally limited to 107,000. And so portions of this money will be used to for Panone to interface with the developer and their contractor as they build out the pedestrian malls.
Okay, so Panone is designing the pedestrian mall and then a developer is going to build what it is that Panone designed.
Yes.
Okay, so I think a follow-up question that to that is, does that developer have like leeway, like, hey, we like your design, but it's going to be costly, so we want to instead change it to make it better for us and our bottom line? Is that?
No, that is not the case. When we submitted, when we put out the request for proposals, the design was included in the request for proposals. And some developers have already started to, well, they've already cost out the cost of construction. That will be part of their financial outlook.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes.
Sure.
So the, the net change, Director Jackson, for this is, is about $15,000, correct?
Yes.
And one of the things, so, and we're not, we're not funding this through the New, New Jersey Infrastructure Bank anymore, correct?
Right, we're not, but we are trying to, you know, pay one of the bills associated with that.
Yes.
Say.
So, okay, so the 15,000, the purpose of the 15,000. Panone applied to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank on our behalf. So there is still one outstanding bill associated with that. And then the rest of the 15,000 is for the interface with New Jersey Transit when we build this out, as well as the developer that is going to construct.
So when, when they submitted their $107,000 proposal, it didn't include the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank work. It didn't include. It didn't include working with New Jersey Transit when that is around a train station. And it also, they've added in fut- working with future developers to negotiate their plans when we have planning consultants that we pay. So.
It didn't, it, it didn't include enough money, so I'll say it that way, uh, for the interface with New Jersey Transit. New Jersey Transit has asked or requested a lot of information, uh, uh, in terms of drawings. So we hadn't anticipated all of the requests for information. And so we still have to coordinate with New Jersey Transit.
By the way, how does a developer fund this?
A developer will fund this by paying for the construction. And that may include, that may include them, uh, that'll probably include them building it out to our specifications.
But they're just doing that out of the goodness of their heart?
It's part of the negotiation of the terms with the developer. So we have, we have a set of business terms with the developer and, uh, we're negotiating, uh, those terms. It was included in the R, RFP, uh, for them to construct the pedestrian mall. So they had.
I, so I totally get that. I get what RFPs are. I'm just saying that you, we didn't go out to, for an RFP to find a developer to develop this for free. So this money's coming from somewhere. So there, there, it's a developer who's going to do another development in the vicinity of this.
It is attached to the development of parking lot six, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? You know, Director Jackson, I just have to give you props, you know, for all of this lengthy negotiations and, and, and getting this, uh, bringing this closer to fruition. I know it's a hard work, a, a lot of hard work and a lot of know-how and skilled negotiations in doing what you do. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with, with that, uh, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
So moved, second.
Okay, Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Council members?
No.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes, sir.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed. Resolution's been adopted. Resolution one thirty-five twenty-one in support of the liquor license reform in the state of New Jersey.
Any questions from council members?
Yes, I do.
Councilman?
Um, I did not get a chance and, and, and I will go and do, do the research, but from Friday night till, to, today, I did not get a chance on this one. So I was hoping Mr. Mencello could just tell me, in the, in the, um, liquor license reform legislation, is there anything that allows for, um, for some sort of compensation or remuneration to individuals that have existing liquor licenses? For example, uh, somebody bought a liquor license for four hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's probably got a market value of, you know, that or more. Um, some of them I know in Westwood have gone for eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then suddenly somebody can get a liquor license for a lot less. Uh, and this kind of is part of one thirty-five and one thirty-six. So, um, that's gonna dilute there, the, the value of that liquor license. Which I'm not against the liquor license reform because I think it's, it's so outdated and, and puritanical. It's ridiculous. However, you do have people that, that follow the rules and, and have valuable liquor licenses that will become less valuable.
If you don't know. Well, I, I'm not aware of any remuneration. The, the, the problem though is, as to your point, if we consistently look up for, only for the license holders' interests, we'll never have the reforms that you suggested. So, um, that, that's the concern here.
I know, I disagree with, with that. Um, we do it a lot with other things. We look out for one interest versus others. But I, you know, I was just more interested in if you knew of anything in it.
No, I know, I'm not aware. Obviously, I'll, I'll defer to Clerk if he knows of anything, but I'm not aware, uh, of any remuneration.
No, I don't believe that that's in the statute.
Thank you. Further questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, with this reform, does this increase the number of liquor license, um, that will come to Plainfield or how does that really affect, uh, Plainfield?
Uh, right, right now liquor licenses are controlled based, simply based on your population. So based on the population of the town, that's how many liquor licenses you're allowed to hold. And what this does is open that up to many more license holders. Uh, in terms of the liquor license, uh, here in the state of New Jersey, on average, it's about three hundred thousand dollars per license. And it could go from a hundred thousand to over a million dollars to, uh, secure a license, a liquor license. Uh, so it's pretty draconian in the state of New Jersey. So this allows reform. Uh, it is supported by the New Jersey League of Municipalities as well as the New Jersey Urban Mayor's Association for Liquor License Reform in the state. The discussion has been going on for decades, but it really needs to happen at this point.
Thank you. I think my question was more of what is the benefit to Plainfield by supporting this?
Liquor licenses, uh, available to us so that we can have more restaurant owners with liquor license. It's a way to attract restaurant, uh, you know, owners into the city is by having liquor licenses that are available and they're not priced out of the market.
Just real quick comment, because I think we're, we're all kind of talking about the, the same two, there's two resolutions that sitting in favor and one's kind of spelling them out. But just for clarity, these are not regular liquor licenses. These are limited to, if somebody has a full-service restaurant, they can get a liquor license, they can apply for a liquor license for beer, wine, and cider.
That's the second, that's one thirty-six.
But that's, but the first one is encouraging them to reform it. The second one is the specific, right? Thank you.
Did I answer your question, Congresswoman Davis?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, seeing and hearing, uh, no additional questions. I, I just had a quick, uh, additional question. Does it have, has there been any chatter about how much a liquor license would cost if this were passed? Anybody have an idea what the savings might be?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I will tell you for a liquor, uh, permit. For when a municipality owns a property and they rent it out to someone, uh, then it's only a few hundred dollars a year for a license permit and you would apply annually to get it.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved, second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution six twenty-one in support of the city bill S two nine four and New Jersey Assembly Bill A four nine two five, which establishes district alcoholic beverage license.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution one thirty-seven one authorizing the continued award of a professional services contract to the Lewis Consulting Group.
Questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Both.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution one thirty-eight twenty-one increasing the award of a professional service contract to Panone and Associates.
Are there any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Both.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
And resolution one thirty-nine twenty-one authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum with the New Jersey Medical School Global Tuberculosis Institute.
Okay, scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion in a second?
Both.
Okay. All those in favor?
I didn't hear a second on that one.
I think it was Councilman Good and Councilwoman Davis.
I seconded it, it's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved. Okay, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Uh, Clerk, please read MC twenty twenty-one dash oh nine by title.
MC twenty twenty-one dash oh nine is ordinance to rename Central Avenue to Charles Nana. Okay. I believe.
Council President, if I may be heard on this one?
That's correction.
So?
Council President, if I may.
Yes.
May.
Yes, the, uh, the ordinance incorrectly, uh, refers to Central Avenue. It should be Central Street. So at this time, we would request a motion to amend the ordinance on first reading to be renamed to Central Street, not Central Avenue.
Council President, I make a motion to, uh, amend to Central Street.
I second amendment, I second.
Okay, um, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, the amendment has been approved to the resolution.
Thank you, Council President.
You're, you're welcome. We now have a, an amended resolution. Uh, may I have a motion?
Point of, uh, question, Council President?
Just based on, um, Mr. Michelson's comment earlier regarding renaming streets, I, I think it's important to just clarify that, that we're not physically renaming the street. That it's, it's, uh, becomes an honorary, um, name, just like we did, uh, with, um, Second Street.
Council President, I can, I can address that.
Please do, Council.
Council McKenna, in most instances, it is merely an honorary designation. However, with regard to Central Street, it is the will of the mayor and this administration that this street ultimately be renamed with the post office. So this is step one in renaming the street. Uh, after it is adopted, we will be engaging with the post office to discuss the process of, of renaming the street, uh, completely. So this, this one would be different from the others that we have done.
So I'm, I'm in favor of that. However, how did we choose not to do that for Milk Campbell Way? Do we, do you happen to know or no?
I, I don't. I, I just took the direction from the administration. Uh, but this one specifically was important to the mayor that, uh, this street be renamed in its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, Councilwoman.
Um, so let me start by saying, I think the bookers, uh, deserve this. I'm glad to see that them, that they're being honored for their, uh, trailblazing, um, in so many ways. But are there, is there like protocol or parameters about how we decide, um, to not only name streets, but to decide to like, with the post office? Um, I know you said it was the will of the administration, which is, uh, cool, but is there like protocols for like moving forward? Uh, if there's another administration or another council, like are there parameters around how things like that get done?
To answer your question, Councilwoman, it's really at the will of this body. Um, you know, a, a council has that, both administration and council, if you believe that someone has such historical significance to the city of Plainfield that it warrants not just an honorary designation, but an actual name change, that is within your power to do. Um, and, um, you know, there's, there are no hard and fast rules. It's ultimately up to each democratically elected body to make that decision.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to be heard on this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I am so glad, so happy that this governing body is considering this action this evening. These are two individuals who have made an indelible mark on the city of Plainfield. And just like we have these streets around the city called Rushmore and Johnston and so on and so forth, which place that mark of those individuals and their contributions. You know, over those hundreds of years. I think it is important for posterity that the bookers be recognized and that their names will, just like the others, be left as a mark on this city in a very positive way. Um, the councilman from the second ward raised an interesting question. And I must tell you that I am fully supportive also of having the street that goes along, which in this case, East Third Street. And I believe that the action that was taken previously, um, named that street from Tarow to, I believe, Leland in honor of the late Milk Campbell. And given the fact that the park there is already carrying his name, I think it would also make sense, quite frankly, to rename that section, you know, permanently as Milk Campbell, I don't remember if we said Milk Campbell Way, Milk Campbell What? But I would not be opposed and I would encourage you to take similar action, um, because it aligns perfectly with the park that is already there. Um, most of you know that the new school that will be built at the corner of Central Street and Woodland Avenue that the Board of Ed has already, um, made a decision to name it in honor of the bookers. This ordinance was to be on the last council meeting, the last agenda, but it didn't make it, but it's here now. And I encourage you to adopt this ordinance in recognition of the enormous contributions of the bookers to the city of Plainfield. And to look at doing a similar thing as far as Milk Campbell is concerned. And that could be revisited and put through the same process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a follow-up question to the mayor's comment. So how do we go about making that permanent change to Milk Campbell Way?
Uh, Councilwoman, we'll be engaging with the post office on that, uh, after this meeting. Um, I mean, oh no, Milk Campbell Way, I'm sorry, I thought you meant as to, uh, as to, uh, Central Street. Uh, if it's the will of the body, we can proceed on both fronts. Um.
Making the, so do we do a new, is it a new ordinance to, uh, amend that ordinance or is it just like a resolution? So, like, what's the actual?
We're gonna engage with the post office on this to see what's required. If additional action by council is needed, we'll certainly return. But, uh, with the direction from the mayor this evening, we will move on both Milk Campbell Way, uh, and Central Street, uh, to ensure that they're both permanently changed.
Thank you.
If there's an additional action required by council, we'll come back to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, makes sense, sounds efficient. Thank you for that, Councilor. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Moved, Council.
Okay, I got a motion from Council VP Good and a second from Councilwoman Davis. Uh, Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
On mute?
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
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 President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, next clerk, read MC 2021-10.
MC 2021-10 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9, regulated activities, Article 15, vehicles for transportation of passengers, Part 4 Taxi Cab Owner and Driver Regulation, Section 36, minimum amount of insurance required.
Any questions from councilmembers? Let's discuss. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
VP Good?
Yes.
Yes.
Will it be adopted on first reading?
Clerk, read MC 2021-11.
See, 2021-11 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Article 19, Section 8B, fees and fines for bulk discount applied to regional institutions.
Any questions from councilmembers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
First, I'm glad to see that the administration took swift action in getting this ordinance on the agenda. But because the rate change happens before this ordinance is passed and final, will it be retroactive? Or will this apply to 2022? Since you have to pay yearly for parking passes and whatnot?
That's something that we're going to visit and look at and make a decision, you know, based on everything that's happened with education institutions, we're talking to them now. So we'll work something out with them to make good for everyone, make some compromise. But 10% is what we're looking at, you know, on an annual basis.
I understand what the discount is. I think my question is more of if the rate changes, I don't know, next week, but there still has to be a second reading in April for it, and then it's 20 days after that. But they had to buy the new parking passes in March. Does this discount become retroactive to what they paid? Or do they have to just wait this year and then they get the discount in 2022? That's.
They would wait this year based on, you know, law, because we wanted the two months, two readings plus 20 days, and then we'll take the action, appropriate action. No point.
Councilwoman Davis, yeah, we legally cannot retroactively apply a rate change. So whatever the rate is, we are legally obligated to adhere to the rate set by council.
Okay, thank you. But I think we then still, like while this solves their problem for next year, I think we still have a problem for this year. Because when they buy the passes, I know their concern was the amount of money that they have to pay because of the new rate changes is going to affect the amount of programs that they're able to offer students.
I believe, I'm sorry, I believe, don't they pay monthly? This, I know the specific institution that you're talking about. I believe their letter to us indicated that there was a monthly payment. And in that case, based on what Corporation Council said, the months, you know, for the months before this ordinance is in place, they would pay the rate that the ordinance that we passed a month or two months ago put into place. But then, once this is adopted officially, their monthly rate would change. So in a month and plus 20 days, their monthly rate would switch.
Okay, so I think I just need a little clarity, because I thought, it was my understanding from the parking ordinance that we passed, that people went from purchasing parking passes monthly to now purchasing them annually.
There's an annual rate there, but that doesn't mean you pay, that it needs to be paid annually. It's an annual rate.
Okay, thank you. So I think that was some confusion across the community, because I know other organizations were talking about that, that they weren't paying monthly anymore, but instead they were paying annually for their parking passes. So I, okay, so I think there's clarity for everybody that while there is an annual rate, you can still buy your passes monthly.
And Council President, if I may add, those who choose to pay annually will obviously pay less than those who pay monthly.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from councilmembers? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading. Have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Yes. McCray? Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
VP Good?
Yes.
President Hockaday?
Yes.
Will it be adopted on first reading?
Clerk, read MC 2021-12.
You see, 2021-12 is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages. 14, Chapter 11 of the municipal code of the city of Plainfield is the salary amendment.
Okay, any questions from councilmembers?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilman McKenna?
Does this result in just a title and a salary change, or does this result in a headcount?
It's just a title change.
So no, no new individual will be hired for that position?
No new individuals are being hired for either of the positions. There's two positions that that we had employees in. Those titles are now irrelevant because those two employees moved over into a different division, and we're just putting their new titles into the PMMA contract.
Thank you.
The old ones remain vacant, yep, no problem.
Okay, further questions? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this on first reading.
Moved.
Okay, that was a second from Councilwoman Mills-Ransom. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Yes, it was moved by Vice President Good, seconded by Councilwoman Mills-Ransom. Roll call on MC 2021-12, Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, clerk, read MC 2021-13.
MC 2021-13, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 187-191 North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map as Block 313, Lot 11, and identified in the city's tax records as 187 through 191 North Avenue.
Okay, scanning the screen for questions from councilmembers.
I have questions.
Sure, Councilman McKenna?
Considering the resolution has an Exhibit A that's blank, and then the financial agreement has Exhibits A, B, and C, and they're all blank. One, why is that? And two, who are the principles for this urban renewal?
Sorry about that. Principles for this particular project is Zed Homer and Chris Block, her husband. And so they'll be developing the property. Exhibits A, B, and C being blank, I'm not sure why that is. Let me. Yeah, I'm just not sure why that is. It should be there, but I will make that available.
Can you tell me too, I couldn't find it in there? What they paid for the property?
Okay, the property, the redevelopment and land disposition agreement was approved at the last council meeting. And the cost of the property to them is $69,000 and some change. I don't remember the exact number, but I know it was $69,000. It is a vacant lot that's directly across the street from the Plainfield train station. And that lot has been vacant for a while. And so that's the property.
So with all the investment going on and a developer doing that, that pedestrian mall that went for $69,000?
Yes, and I am, this is kind of really the first activity occurring in that section of North Avenue in a long time. And so we're hoping that it brings new life and new value to the area. Certainly apartment units, but it will bring additional retail to the area.
It'll bring, oh, they already have a store going in? Or they have the space?
They have the space, for it's 1,500 square feet.
Council President, I have a question.
All right, ahead, please.
Director Jackson, I know I ask you this every time we have a financial agreement, but I don't think we can stress it enough, really the importance of pilots and what they mean for redevelopment in a municipality like Plainfield. So can you just, once again, explain that for the benefit of the public who's on here and for members of the public who may watch this at a later date?
I'm glad you asked the question, because earlier there were some comments about the number of apartment units. Director West referenced the projects. And so, for example, the Quinn is bringing in new revenue for 2021. You'll see that when we go through the budget. The station at Grant, which was, we did a ribbon cutting last week, bringing in additional revenue, even these are properties with pilot payments. The Randolph was granted a temporary CO, which is the former Mullenberg property, that will bring in additional revenue this year. So this particular property currently is owned by the city, so there are no taxes being paid on this property. Under our pilot agreement, for the first year, we'll get $36,000 for this particular property. It is a smaller property, and so that's why the pilot, but it's zero versus 36. And over the 30 years, so let me just look at that number. I'm sorry. I don't have the number in front of me. For the first year is $36,000. It increases every year over the 30-year time period. But in this case, it's going from $0 to the new amount. So thank you for the question.
Follow-up question, are we receiving some type of community benefit from this pilot?
No, we're not in this case. The pilot is smaller, it's four point. The project is smaller, not the pilot. The project is smaller, the total cost of the project is 4.5 million. And remember, I've stated in the past, it was basically a benefit agreement and the amount based on the size of the project. And so this is a much smaller project, and the return on investment is not as great for this particular project.
So on what size project do we begin to ask for community?
I would say any project that's probably around 8 million and up. We are looking at community benefit agreements, but it ranges. So, you know, we have some projects that are about 18 million, which would be a 70-unit building, to those projects that are like 56 million in the case of Mullenberg. So just to give you an example of this difference in size.
Okay, and just for clarity, can you just explain what a community benefit is or a community benefit agreement? Because not everybody is in redevelopment, so they may not really understand what that means in terms of like pilots and like how that kind of helps us out.
Yes, so we generally ask for on these redevelopment agreements and financial agreements, community benefits agreement. Generally ranges from anywhere to 25,000 to 150,000. In some cases, 200,000. And we usually ask for that money to contribute to something of benefit to the city. So that could be improving a park, it could be improving a city, a street, it could be improving any number of things. It could also go to help the city budget as well. And so that's what we use community benefit agreements for. We also ask for off-site improvement dollars. And we have begun to ask for more dollars for equipment for students in the school district, so computers. We understand what type of computers are in the school district that they're using currently. We've gotten pricing on that, so we ask for an amount that gives us 50 to 100.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from councilmembers? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call? Your roll call.
Council President, I don't think he heard you. I don't think he heard you.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor?
Okay, clerk, read MC 2021-14.
2021-14 is an ordinance repealing the existing stormwater management regulations, adopting the New Jersey Stormwater Regulations consistent with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection requirements.
Questions from councilmembers? Hearing and seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis? McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes, sir, yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to public comments. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized, to be unmuted. Give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given five minutes, the floor is now open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Sekita Cooper here, Plainfield business owner. I just want to, this is not a beat-up comment, this is truly just for a suggestion. I have suggested this many times before, I'm asking again. The certificate of occupation, I'm sorry, the certificate of occupancy, the exemption process is not working. It's been a full year now. We were finally able to get some of the applications uploaded online. I do realize that we are working on the website, so this is not a gripe about the website. Years ago, there was a packet that was put together. It would have the instructions, it would have the fees, it would have somewhat of a detailed explanation of what to expect, what to do. The way it has been presented now on the city website, there are three to four different applications. And unless you speak to someone and get complete clarification, you may not complete all of those applications because they are not bundled together. In that application, you should also have the packet for the fire department. You should not have to go to their website and download their information as well. During COVID, we have had to endure a lot of challenges. Getting a temporary CO vote or an exemption should not be an added one. Uh, the language on the current application that is uploaded on the website as of tonight has conflicting information. On one line, it says you cannot occupy the premise. And in the very next line, it says you can. That was a point of contention for me a few months ago as the director would then have to field emails from attorneys who would not allow the purchaser to sign that document because of the language. So I'm asking again if we could revisit that. There is no reason that we can't have a short video on our website to detail what you are asking of us real estate professionals or if the homeowner themselves is trying to complete this information. So I'm just asking if you could please reconsider putting some more detailed information together. I would be happy to work with someone if they wanted to do that. Um, there are three or four documents that need to be put together along with the smoke cert that comes from a whole different department. And being able to have that information in one central area would definitely be more user friendly for the city. Let alone the fact that it's not even a PDF document. You know, that's another story for another day, but right now, if we could just put those documents together as a packet with a little bit of detail on what to expect, timeframes and so forth, I think it would serve the city better and make for a smoother process for those of us who are trying to do transactions within the city. But that's it. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Thank you for your contributions and your viewpoint. Uh, look forward to working with you in the, in the future on the website and that all those issues. Uh, Ms. Bailey, uh, name and address for the record.
Garnell Bailey, seven oh eight Spooner Avenue in Plainfield. Good evening. Um, during the last city council meeting, I was, I was really, really disappointed at how the attorney misrepresented the concerns of the neighbors of Spooner Court. Um, we are taxpaying individuals, homeowners, whose not only taxes are current, but our PMU A bills are current as well. It is our opinion that we are being double taxed. He was not forthcoming as it relates to the, um, city council members. And I don't know if he's been forthcoming even with the administration. I forwarded the majority of you the tax bill, the electric bill, um, for the streetlights. We've also incurred water bills for the fire hydrant. I believe it's only one between seventh and eighth. And there's an additional sewer bill. Each of our units probably pays about ten grand annually in taxes and we don't really get any services. I have concerns. I'm tired of the runaround, tired of getting blown off. Um, I mean, and just the way he spoke to me and painted this picture like, oh, well, they have all these bills that are run up and yeah, I know he gets the last word, but as an employee of the city administration, I wouldn't tolerate him lying to me if I were you. I want to know when's the next RFP. Cause I mean, totally unprofessional, it, I'm glad you're smiling, cause I'm not. And lastly, the situation really needs to be addressed because there's a five hundred thousand surety bond, a five hundred thousand performance bond, and twenty eight thousand on the books and the builder walked away. We don't even have a street sign. The lights are defective. And they're built, we got a six thousand plus dollar electric bill. Unheard of. And the fire hydrant has been turned off. The water hydrant, let's hope there's no fire on Spooner Avenue between seventh and eighth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, Ms. Pivvar? Name and address for the record.
Hi, Nancy Pivvar, eleven twenty nine Moore Avenue. Uh, a couple of things, um, when you go to change the sign at Rock Avenue, I hope that you would consider putting up some warning signs and letting, um, drivers know that it's now been changed because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of confusion with people that are used to going through there and having to stop in each direction. Um, that's just a suggestion. Uh, my other concern, and it's been a real concern because I, I saw something on Facebook and I'm not usually one that responds, but there, this, but it's brought something to my attention more than I probably would have even thought about. There is a real garbage and litter problem. Um, since that post showed up, um, I didn't even realize it, but in the past four days, I've had to go in my backyard. I have a very deep backyard. I hardly ever walk back there. But in the past four days, I've had to walk back there because it's been windy. And I can't believe the amount of garbage that is blowing into my backyard. I'm used to picking up garbage in my front yard. But obviously somebody somewhere must have open cans somewhere that the garbage is, is, is blowing way three hundred feet away from my house. Um, the city does have an ordinance about chain link fences. I'm not necessarily in agreement with that ordinance because since stockade fences have gone up, you can't necessar- I know people want privacy, but it's also a safety issue and you can't see if anybody has stacked garbage because you can't see through the fence. Um, the issue is also bad on Front Street because obviously everybody knows I go to the Drake House almost every day. And, um, the landscaper hasn't been there during the winter necessarily, so I've had to pick up the garbage. So the past twice that I picked up the garbage there and like that was today. One day, um, it's, it's garbage that I don't even know where it's coming from. Like I got Burger King bags there. We don't have a Burger King near the Drake House, okay? I can understand maybe a McDonald's bag because it's down the street, but I can't understand why I had to pick up two Burger King bags. So it's gotta be tossed out the window. Um, forget liquor bottles and beer bottles, I, I get those all the time. The other issue is the masks. I, I can't tell you how many masks I've had to pick up, uh, in the past couple of times. Today was six, the other day it was six. Um, you know, I do have the equipment to pick up, but the city needs to make some kind of campaign, something to get these people to understand that they just can't pitch the garbage. Greenbrook Park, I know that's not your, your purview, but Greenbrook Park, people constantly dump down there. And they need to put cameras up and, and they need to catch these people. They're not necessarily our people. Uh, you know, they come from out of town and dump in Greenbrook Park. Um, the other issue I want to talk about is, um, the ordinance about Booker Avenue. Um, I, 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 I think it's a good idea and I'm glad that the, uh, Corporation Council said that there was an, uh, an error because that's been an error that's been going on for so many years. People get mixed up with Central Street and Central Avenue. So if you are going to the postal service to talk to them about that, that might be a way to get them to agree to a name change because there has been an issue in mail delivery um, on that street and on Central Avenue because some of the numbers are the same. So that might be an added benefit for you to get the name changed, but I do think, um, that adding Anna and Charles, I know that why you want to do that, but you have to remember computers don't, can't take that many characters anymore. So you have to be practical about the names, so you may just want to change it to Booker Avenue and, and, and everybody in town would know it's Anna and Charles because I don't know. Try to put a, a name into a computer. It might not take that many characters and I just want to make you aware of that as a practical matter. Not saying that I want to dismiss Anna and Charles because I think they did a lot for this community. But just be aware of the practical matters when you go to do that. But I do think you can use the fact that Central Street and Central Avenue get mixed up in mail delivery might help you with the address, uh, management inside the postal service and those are my suggestions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Once again. Ms. Sadiq?
Hi, good evening. It's Gonzalez Sadiq, seven oh six Spooner Avenue. Dr. Garnell and I are neighbors in Spooner Court. Uh, we were on the last month's council meeting and we just felt that, you know, our voices were not heard. Um, we actually, I felt offended at the end of, you know, sitting in, waiting to speak and then when we spoke, um, we were, I felt was, we were just brushed off by the attorney. Um, so again, our concern, my concern, being in this cul-de-sac and, you know, the other residents, we're paying almost ten thousand each, if not more, some houses for taxes. We still are getting an electric bill for the streetlights. We have a water bill for the hydrant. We have a sewer drainage bill for the parking area. And we don't understand how our taxes are not covering all of these utilities. Um, we, we're paying our property tax and then now we have to pay all these bills. We don't know, you know, what, I, I wasn't at the council meeting in person last year, February. And then again, we were back on the council meeting last month. I just feel that we're going in circles and this platform is just not long enough or the right time to, you know, get everything out in the open. What we're hoping for is at the end that everyone that's on this call from the Plainfield public offices that I'm seeing on this Zoom meeting, you, you guys could please set up a meeting and meet with us directly so that we are all on the same page because it seems like we, you know, meet, we, one by one by individuals and then it's always referred back to somebody else in the city of Plainfield. I think what we need to do is we need to get everyone that, you know, has a say in this to meet with us and figure out what is the solution because I, I don't know how long I can continue to pay these bills and the property taxes and not see any benefit. And I, I don't know how the attorney can just brush us off the last time saying that we're not getting these bills and that we're not being billed and, you know, something has got to be done.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sadiq.
Thank you.
Coats, name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Sharice Coats, one forty one McKinley Place. Uh, just have a, a couple of things that I want to mention tonight. Um, the first is, there's some misleading, misleading information which is on our website, uh, on the city's website and it happens to be information that's over the mayor's name. I did bring it to, um, someone's attention, but I want to make sure that we go on record and have that information updated. It's on the COVID resources, uh, resources and updates, um, section of the website. And it mentions that there is not a vaccine for COVID. I think that that information, you know, needs to be updated. That information is on the website and it's over the mayor's name. Uh, let's see, uh, the other thing that I want to mention, uh, is about the garbage and litter in the city. Um, I have to also concur with the, uh, one of the last, um, speakers talking about the garbage and litter. I live on McKinley Place in Plainfield, which is a small little Devon Street off of the Second Street. And I've mentioned at the last council meeting as well about the garbage. Um, if any of you are ever on the East End, take a ride down East Second Street between McKinley and Leland Avenue. It looks like a dump and I'm not kidding you. It is really bad. The amount of garbage that is on the streets between McKinley Place and Leland Avenue on East Second Street is really bad. Um, I did mention, um, and Ashley, thank you. I know that there, there was actually some furniture, actually somebody put furniture out on the street. Uh, they did come up, come by and pick up the furniture, but the garbage is horrible on that street. Additionally, on East Second Street, uh, in the last council meeting, I, I had asked about a four-way stop sign. I know that was one of the items that was discussed at the last meeting. Again, I'll mention it again, uh, there needs to be a study or some, some type of, um, direction made on a four-way stop sign at the corner of East Second and Johnston Avenue. Uh, coming down East Second Street, it is a raceway between Berkman and Leland. And by the time someone gets to McKinley Place, whether you're coming east or west, you, you have some good speed and I'm, I'm just dreading, I'm, I'm hoping one day I'm not kind of creeping out of McKinley Place because I can never see as I come out of the street that I don't, don't have an accident because folks fly up and down that street. Uh, my last point that I wanted to talk about, uh, was information that was shared by, uh, Sam Cooper. Uh, Sam had talked about, uh, additional information being available on, on the website. Uh, one of the things that I've said, you know, I, I appreciate that there's a lot of investment going on in the city and people are buying properties in the city. Uh, what I, and what I've said also in these meetings is that I don't believe that all investment is good investment because I think some people are buying here, uh, because they see it as an easy way um, to buy up properties and just rent them out to whomever they want to. I want to make sure though that the city, um, starts to educate some of these folks that are coming into the town and buying properties. Because I'm starting to see now that, you know, people are coming into town and they're not knowing about bulk pickup, they're not knowing about the fact that they can't move into a property and leave couches outside on the sidewalks because I've had that happen. Um, so I think there needs to be some education of people coming into the, coming into the city and understanding what some of the regulations are in the city as, as it relates to, you know, your responsibilities as a homeowner, homeowner and your responsibilities as a tenant. Thank you guys for your time tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Nikki, name and address for the record.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, yes. So my name is Nicole Hargrove. My address is one five two Carlisle Terrace in, uh, Plainfield. So, um, my question is more for, uh, the police director. So I've, I've been in contact with, I'm a lieutenant with Plainfield Rescue Squad and I've been in contact with your, um, your outside officer, Mr. Archilio, I, I know I'm saying his name wrong. Um, in regards to getting my son stuff on the road, I know Mayor Matt had the, um, initiative of meeting him at the flag football about a couple of years ago where we bought, where you guys raised money to help him get the glasses, the east side glasses to see. Well, my son is, uh, currently blind and he's part of the school system. We've been asking for, um, a street sign to be put up on, on our street because we do have kids that ride their bikes and stuff like that on the street, but also because my son, he's thirteen, he plays in the street. Cars zoom up and down the street all day. I've been in contact with the officer for about almost a year now and I still haven't gotten contact back. Nobody's, um, said anything to me. I haven't seen a sign be put up when I was told that I would get a sign.
Thank you very much. The name says Rainey. Name and address for the record, please.
17 West 7th Street, Plainfield, as the Spooner Court development. I was present for the February meeting where I did address some issues concerning this development. For example, being billed for this five-car parking area which we lost, it was foreclosed on actually, and we had no knowledge of that. We just found out about that. And that we're paying for the fire hydrant and the city lights. My taxes are current, my PMUA bill is current, my water bill, electric bills are all current. But Mr. Minichella responded with abruptness, offensively, impolite and ill-mannered, accusing me and my neighbors of not paying our bills. This is why we're going through this, he stated. We are being billed in error and we need your help. Please help us resolve this matter. Otherwise, I'm considering leaving the state of New Jersey because I'm just exhausted and drained from going through the same thing over and over and no resolution, no one in this city is helping us. It's just an ongoing disaster. So if you guys can please, you know, have a meeting of the minds and help us. Thank you and I appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, Plow Gonzales, 903 Central Avenue. Well, thank you. First of all, it is very happy to see you all. I know that we close in the streets alone and suffer with a lot of losses in the city of town and Plainfield. However, I have not seen any communication from the city conservations or tell the families about how hard it has been for all of us losing members of the family. Including, last night, we was having the wait for the person that was killed on 815 West Front Street. That was very bad. They kill him and then start fire on him and everything else. And the family only received half of the body. I have seen no communication from the government body, no, from no one to the families with this tremendous and terrible death in our city, in the middle of the city of Plainfield. It's not, it's not far away from us, 815 West Front Street. The family, the mother, it was devastated, still are, the family still are. We need a lot of counseling and we have not really seen no communication, totally silent. We need to work, you know, onto the security. If we need to fund and give more money to the police department, we should, we should do it right away. Our police department should have the best on everything. And you have the best on cars, then you have the best on equipment, then you have the best on investigation. Then you have the best of the best. And I hope that they also have already been vaccinated because they need to be there in the streets and keep our city safety. I look forward to see what communications you all want to give about these families that losing the families for one way or the other, either because of the security or either because of the COVID, or even because anything, it is have been very hard for the immigrant community and the city of Plainfield and for the whole community. Another point about the COVID. We are very grateful with, with this assemblywoman Rebecca Williams, or freeholder Rebecca Williams, for the job that she had done with the COVID. And yes, we do have COVID vaccines on Plainfield High School every Wednesday. And because of her and, and her work, we have been advised that we have that vaccines and, and we have have a lot of the seniors going there because of this councilwoman or freeholder, I'm sorry, Rebecca Williams. Lastly, it is, it is for us as a community the important to unite in moments like this, which you not see no color, no race, no language, no anything. We need to know that we have a lot of people coming in into our town. A lot of people that do not know anything about security, do not know anything about the streets, do not know anything about housing. And yes, I agree with somebody that mentioned about rental. Well, we have a lot of people that buy property in Plainfield and then rented it with very expensive, very, very, very expensive apartment that had two bedrooms is $1,700. We have no control and rent controller. And I, I, I did erase that once upon a time. And it being said that, you know, is, we don't have no, no rent controller, we're not going to have one. But at least we should investigate what is going on. Because i-if I, I'm going to rent an apartment that is $1,700 and I make only $300 a week, how am I going to be able to survive that payment? By putting more people and probably rent that room or probably share the apartment with somebody else. And that's when a lot of problems are. I just want to say to all of you that we have no more tears crying over what is going on in this world. But we also need to be protected with each other. We need to protect our police department, that way our police department protecting us. It's not fair, it's not sound. I have no more words for people. When they say they kill the lady that last week was fine dead in one apartment. No reason, no nothing. She went to a party, then come back and is dead. This other person that was killed, it is, it's been very, very sad. So.
Council President Speaker.
Give more money.
Council President Speaker, time is up.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez, I do appreciate your impassioned, passionate remarks. And they were, they were received. I do appreciate. Ms. Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Oh, it's name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, good evening. This is Terry Briggs Jones, 616 West 4th Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Just a question and a concern. And also, I just want to thank those that put the information out about the COVID-19. And so for the, the information to be disseminated to the seniors. So I want to thank whoever has been putting that information out because now it's getting out there in the community. And although I did run into a couple more seniors, so I just directed them to where they need to go, what they need to do, who they need to speak to. I just direct them to Rebecca Williams and I called down to recreation, I mean, not recreation department, whatever. So I said that to say this is that, and this is just a concern, has, and I know that the Park Hotel is a private entity. But my question is, is anybody in contact with the people that run that place to reassure and to make sure that those people that are mentally incapacitated have their COVID shots, have those shots? Because those people, and I'm very passionate about that because mental illness is on the rise. And also I have family members that have suffered from that. So I'm concerned about that because those people are out there around Twin City, the all-up-and-down Park Avenue, you know, the, everywhere. And, you know, I'm passionate about those people and I'm concerned because they walk the streets all times of night. So my question is, again, I just wanted to know, is, is anybody in contact with the people there, even though it's a private entity? And they do come in contact with us. I mean, of course, we're going to practice social distancing and wear our masks because that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to follow the rules. But I just want to know, is anybody in contact with them? And if they're not, if somebody could be in contact with them, you know, to see what's going on with them so that, you know, we can kind of like, you know, say to them, say, hey, you know, maybe you might want to consider to get all of them together, make sure they get their shots or something, you know, because they are out there. And I do feel passionate about that. Thank you for your time.
And thank you as well.
There is no one with their hand raised?
Okay. Director Brown, would you like to say just a thing or two about our COVID response with, you know, I, I know that you've helped lead the response and, you know, part of the credit goes to you, certainly the mayor as well.
Council President, respectfully, are you going to close public comments or are you going to leave it open?
I like that suggestion. I'll entertain a motion to.
Mary, Ms. Burwickle has her hand up now.
Okay. Ms. Burwickle, name and address for the record.
Hi, Mary Burwickle, 1785 Sleepy Hall Lane. I really, I'm, I'm really distressed that you cut off the lady before Terry Briggs. And I agree with Terry Briggs. And I have to agree that when I needed to get information about, I got my own shots other places. When I need to get information about vaccines, I went to Rebecca and she helped me. So I, I hope, you know, I think that's disgraceful. 10.86% of the city has had COVID. And I think that the, that, that the administration response in terms of widely getting out where people have to get vaccine has been disgraceful. Thank you.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to close public comment.
Both.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public comment is now closed. Director Brown, as you were. Just, you know, just, just, if you could just address some of the points that were made regarding the COVID response.
So first I want to thank everyone for the questions. They're very good questions. Certainly, the Park Hotel has always been a concern for us throughout the last year and a half. We have spent time working to get the masks to work with their administration to make sure that their residents had everything that they need. But it has been a difficult challenge. We know that the Park Hotel is online to get vaccinations through the health center, who has been working with the administration to come up with a plan, not our administration, but the administration of the Park Hotel, to begin to vaccinate those individuals. I don't have the exact date as to when that is going to happen. But I do know that they have been talking and they've agreed to make it happen. So I think like it's about 140 residents. They will begin that vaccination process. I think that the city has done a pretty great job in getting up the information. Absolutely. But we get out the information as we have. We've had to use our partners, all of our partners, to reach deep into the community so that people know what's going on with the vaccination. I think what was highlighted is certainly that great divide between those who have the privilege of getting information and having access to information and those that do not. We certainly have been working with those that do not, particularly our seniors, through all the avenues such as the senior center, such as everybody who are, who can possibly reach those individuals that need it most. Those also include emergency supervisors. We are working on getting our homeless population vaccinated. And that is through the Department of Health in United Way. And that is a project that we are working on because it is important. And it is certainly something that we need to address. So it is a great challenge to get everyone vaccinated, for sure. It is a goal to get everyone vaccinated, but with the limited resources of the city, we use our partners. And I think that it has happened. And again, what we see is the great divide. We see the divide between those that have been privileged with access to information and access to technology and those that have not been challenged. And those often were those in the black community. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, may I say something?
You may.
Just for the record, Director Brown and some that may have heard you, can you repeat the fact that the Park Hotel and the residents have not been ignored? That that is something that is being addressed?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry to couldn't hear you.
No, I heard you, but someone may not have. I've just.
Oh, the Park Hotel is definitely a priority. It is about the relationship that's being built between the health center and the Park Hotel. So not only are they working on doing the vaccinations, they're also working on providing it with medical care in via mobile device. So it, it has been in process and it has not been ignored. And I agree with the community in that it needs to be done.
Thank you.
Council President.
Yes, Mayor, would you like to?
Yes, yes, please. If I may add to what Director Brown stated, I must say, and I think objective observers will agree, that the city's response to the COVID-19 crisis has been nothing short but excellent in terms of our delivery of COVID testing on a very regular basis in the city at several different locations. In terms of how we have provided support and supplies to our residents who have been hurting. In terms of how we have provided financial support to individuals through the Plainfield COVID-19 Relief Fund, through Plainfield Apps and Services where we provided food, we paid people's utility bills, we provided care packages to our homeless population. And the list goes on and on. We have provided 43 of our small businesses with an average of $7,000 to $8,000 in direct aid. We have been providing vaccines in the arms of people at the Plainfield High School every Wednesday. We have been assisting people in getting registered for the vaccine, both at the high school as well as at Kane University. And so for anyone who would want to leave any member of the public with the impression that we haven't done an enormous job in providing resources and services to our residents, we know that nothing can be further from the truth. We have been pressing the county and state officials for as many resources, as many vaccines as possible. And vaccines, for those who have been following on the news, have, have been in short supply. That's a fact. Thank God for President Biden that the supplies are now being posted. And we are looking forward to the day when we will have the supplies that are needed in the city. But we have done a tremendous job in assisting individuals through our Senior Citizen Center where we take information and we help those people to get the vaccines in their arms. And so this is something that we take very seriously. And anyone who has been observing our response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the COVID-19 crisis, the vaccine crisis can only be, will only recognize the work that we have done in serving the people of Plainfield at every level, across every ward, rich or poor. We have been there on the front lines, doing for the people and providing what they need with the very limited resources that we have, especially the limited supplies on the vaccine. So I can sit here and tell you that as mayor, I am extremely proud of the work my administration has done and the work that I have done personally in assisting people in getting the vaccine in their arms. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President, can I just say one thing, please?
Who was that?
Director Burgess.
Oh, yes, Director Burgess, correct.
I, I just wanted to address the young lady Nikki. I didn't get her last name. And if she can give me a call tomorrow at 908-753-3225. So I can address the concerns in regards to the sign because I'm not familiar with that situation. And then those that spoke or the young lady that spoke about Johnston Avenue, that's something that we will be looking into. And in regards to, actually, we've been there since we spoke, since she spoke last month. But it will take some time to address. but it will take some time to address those concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. And also for Mrs. Gonzalez, I did hear what she was saying, and I would like for her to give me a call as well so I can speak to her further in regards to her concerns tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one comment, one question for Ms. Hargrove on Carlisle Terrace. If, I think she's still, she was, she is still online. If she, oh, no, she doesn't, she, all right, never mind. She logged off. My other thing is a question for Director Brown regarding, I was glad to hear about the Park Hotel, but is there a process in place? I happened to have somebody ask me tonight about vaccinating individuals in our local nursing homes?
So the local nursing homes were done through the previous presidential or federal administration cooperation, WOPC. So they had an agreement with Walgreens and CVS in which they directly vaccinated those individuals. And so that's how they do it.
You know, as well as I do, probably better than I do, that nursing homes have turnover because some people pass away and some people are just there for therapy. So if people came in since Trump left, do you know what the process is for them to be vaccinated?
It's my understanding that they still do it that same way, but I'll verify it.
Okay.
But it's my understanding that's still, that's still.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President, I have a question for Director Brown as well.
Please go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Director Brown, do you know what the protocol is for getting people who are homebound vaccinated, who maybe can't leave their home to go to a vaccination site?
So one of the things that the county and the Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health, and I think United Way in City of Plainfield, we're trying to figure out how do we get to those that are homebound. And so we were looking at doing a mobile unit, pretty much like the pilot that we did when we first started with testing, where we would, individuals would make appointments, and then the mobile van would come to the house. It is, the challenge is that it's a resource-rich kind of project, but I think that's the only way in which we can reach those at home now. I mean, it was really quite successful, the pilot program, when we did testing. So hopefully, we can get the resources set up. We can do it for vaccinations as well.
Thank you so much.
All right. And I just, you know, like to address Ms. Gonzalez as well in terms of cutting her off. I certainly did not cut her off. The time limit allotted for a public comment ran out. And for obvious reasons, we need uniformity in our public comment. Not only for the benefit of, you know, the, but it's really for the benefit of everybody, especially for others who may be waiting for public comment. It gives us predictability in terms of making sure that all residents are equally, have an equal platform to be heard. So I encourage anybody in our audience to speak if they desire, and I would never cut a resident off. But there are time limits, and all we enforce is the time limit and that you speak at the appropriate time during the meeting. Other than that, our community members have wide discretion during those times. And, you know, we appreciate the comments and the, how lively and more informative the meetings become by getting input from our residents. So that's a crucial component to our meetings, and I'm appreciative for it. So, thank you. All right.
Council President, real quick, Ms. Hargrove raised her hand, but we're outside of public comment. But let me just, if I could just make the comment I was going to make before. Ms. Hargrove, if you would call me as soon as we log off of this, you can get me at 347-880-2117. Her hands down, so we're good.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.